Rob Donovan.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so this meeting will set the agenda for the 2022 regular meeting, which was a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, August 11th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We have a full council. We've got everybody here. I'm jumping right into audience communication. We've set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. Make your way to either podium. You have three minutes. Name an address.
Let me try this again. Julian Kram, Andy at 11 Seltzer. I just want to start by saying that some of the comments about the six weeks being enough and whatever is just rather insulting, honestly. I'm a single mom. I own my own home, and I have a son who's got some serious medical issues. I don't have time to devote to social media, or, sorry, but even city politics. As soon as I've learned of this bill, I've been involved. And I do believe that there are no signs up for a reason. This is a matter for a general election. It is a $150 million tax increase. I saw my belongings on the internet so that I can get by. If there's another tax increase, my mom will lose her home. She'll be leaving. It seems like a lot of the issues in this room are from people with higher tax brackets than mine. Dear, and racism and stuff, but anyway. We're trying to recover from the lockdown. We need renewal. Plymouth Road is the only thing that will ever be a downtown if there's going to be one, and it's boarded up. Laurel Park's starting to feel like Wonderland did before it went to heck. Well, hasn't the council done anything to incentivize businesses to enter our city, offer residents any assistance who are struggling? We don't need any personal legacy projects. And I urge everyone to vote now on August 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. King.
Hey, Steve King, Coventry Gardens. That ties right into my comments. There's yeses, there's nos, there's people on both sides of this issue, but whether you support it or not, you have to admit, the timing on this is lawful, as was just alluded to. We are living through extremely challenging economic times. Families across our community are being stretched to the limit. On and off again tariffs are disrupting the delivery and cost of goods. With AI, jobs are less secure, with Michigan leading the nation in unemployment numbers. Prices are skyrocketing from gas to groceries to utilities. The cost of everyday life has surged, and it's only getting worse. DTE and consumers are asking for double-digit increases. Medical care up 14%, new vehicle up 24%, rent up 34%. Property taxes over the last four years up 27%. This is not the time to ask struggling taxpayers for more. While we all want to support quality public services, it must be done responsibly with the realities of working families and the economy in mind. Right now, too many residents are living paycheck to paycheck. Seniors are choosing between medicine and meals. Young families are delaying their future because everything costs more. And yet, instead of tightening their belts and making do like the rest of us, elected officials are asking for even more money. The proposed village is poorly timed and out of touch with the economic pain being felt in many parts of our city. It sends the message that no matter how bad things get for you, the government will always take care of itself. A new city hall, really? What does that do for me? Nothing. Now is the time for fiscal responsibility, not higher taxes. We should be looking for smarter budgeting, more accountability, and alternative funding options that don't fall on the backs of already overburdened residents. Saying no to this village doesn't mean you don't care about this city. It means you care enough to demand better. Better solutions, responsible spending of taxpayer dollars. Join me in voting no on the village. Let's stand up for common sense, for working families, and for the principle that government should live within its means, just like the rest of us. I wore this shirt tonight because there's a, on social media, who's for the village, who's not for the village? I think you know my answer. This is not wishy-washy. Again, tomorrow night, Civic Center Auditorium in the library, 7:00 PM. Come and find that there are other answers. They're so simple, such common sense. Please, show up, spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening.
Good evening. Two quick points. Mayor Kirsey's daughter, I apologize, I don't know your name.
Just name and address.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Listen.
Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. To Mayor Kirsey's daughter, when she was speaking this last few minutes, the video was not on, and it was not presenting her words. So maybe give her another chance to talk again. Think the community would really like to hear that, at least I would, anyway. And secondly, protocols and procedures for tax collection, once it goes to Wayne County, and for any property, either commercial or residential, if the people come in and pay taxes to current, and they have prior tax outstanding, does, who do I call to find out how much that total dollar amount is for the city?
It's not a question. No, no.
It's, no, I'm sorry. Nope. Okay, so if somebody, I ask these questions and I never get an answer back.
No, with us following this with the council communication, I will.
Could you find out for me? I'd love to find out the information. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Lynn Mills, South Livonia. And I want to be positive. I was looking. We were driving home from vacation, 18 hours in the car. Do any of you have the Livonia app on your phone? I do, and I just, it works. I just went there, and I was watching this meeting on here. So Steve King, you can watch it. I know I'm not supposed to talk to him, but...
You're good. You're good. You did well. Listen, you're good.
It works. And I want to say one other positive thing. I know the city inspectors take a lot of heat all the time. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Hershey. He helped us a lot, and I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty details. Help me with his first name. Frank. Thank you. Frank Hershey. God bless you. If I had a bouquet of flowers, I'd present it to him. He just did an outstanding job with the problem we were having, and just, God bless, Mr. Hershey. That's all I have to say.
That's great.
Vote no, but anyway.
No, it's good, too. We will, obviously, it's a public meeting right now, but we'll make sure that Mr. Hannah lets Mr. Hershey know.
Yes, he was outstanding.
We'd love to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, really fast, I know, I just wanted to touch base, Mr. Martin, the floor will be yours, but the external feed has been live the entire time. So the YouTubers and anybody that's out there, it wasn't compromised. The floor is yours. Mr. Martin.
Oh, thank you. I just need the microphone up the floor. Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan, and just want to be really brief. Again, I'm an advocate for voting no on this village. I do believe that the administration will come out with a Plan B at a more appropriate time for voters to actually not be vacationing possibly, but be actually home to vote. And I realize that I vote absentee a lot myself, but some other people do not. So also, I'm in favor of Steve King, okay? I would encourage people to vote for him, not just because I know Steve for years, but because he's stood up here as I have, and he's voiced his opinion on things. And many of the people that are running for city council, if you don't see them at this podium, speaking on a particular subject, if they ever have the opportunity to sit up there, they will be silent. They will just go along with the majority, not research anything themselves, have very little opinion to present on an item that's on the agenda. And that's, I've been watching that for decades, by the way. So if anyone wants to question that comment that I just made, I can pretty much back that up. So that's it, and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Good evening.
Name and address. You've got three minutes.
All right. My name is Kimberly Hooper, and I'm at Sixon, Levann. I'm here just to let the community know that there are two events called Community Conversations. One is happening this Wednesday, July 23rd, at Mees Park, from 5:00 to 8:00. This is an event where people can come and talk to candidates that are running for city council. This is an event that James Hooper organized, but we have invited all of the candidates, all of the current city council, the mayor. We want anyone who is invested in Livonia to attend, so that you can hear from residents. So we have one date this week, and then we have another event next week at Rotary Park Pavilion Number 5. Same time, it's 5:00 to 8:00. And again, we just encourage people to come out. We just want constructive, positive conversations, but also give people a chance to share what's on their mind. If they have, if they feel that their voice is not being heard, we want it to be a place where residents can speak freely and be heard. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Any other audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to move back to council communications. I do have, item eight is to be removed at the request of our DPW. That will be tabled until potentially the next meeting, and I'll hand over to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Hershey's name was mentioned earlier from the ordinance and inspection department, building department, and Mr. Hannah and Mr. Strobel and all those folks do a really great job in the building department and inspection ordinance. Something that's been happening for a while now was Burick. It was an old blighted home that sat vacant and abandoned for 10 years, and back and forth with the owner, previous owner now, I'm happy to announce. But when people don't take care of their properties, there's a long legal battle process that takes many, many years. And finally, because of Mr. Hannah and the building department and his team and the inspectors, they were finally able to get the previous owner that had been absent to sell their home and sell it to someone, and that person's already fixing it up, and they're putting a bunch of money into it and fixing that house all up. And I'm not sure what they're going to do with it, but I think that they're going to rent it or sell it. So nice to see that happen. I know there was another successful similar project over on Seven Mile Blighted House that was demoed, and there's a few other projects that the building department is actively working on, demoed property. So just want to give Mr. Hershey and Mr. Hannah and all those folks a shout out. Thanks, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Anything else from council? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did forget during the regular, when we were doing our announcements. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. The Livonia West Lane Chamber of Commerce had their golf outing last Monday. I was lucky enough to participate in it. It was a great time. They do a lot of great things for our community and the small businesses that are members. And Dan West and the team, kudos to them.
Awesome. Anything else? The only thing, Eileen, if she's still here, I think, yes. I want to table that to give you the best answer I possibly can, because I had a friend that kind of went through that. My gut tells me that it starts at the county, when it gets to that with the tax rolls. As it keeps going and going and going, I think that's where the foreclosure site is, and I will confirm that and let you know. But that is what, I'm, yes, we're shaking heads. I think that's the answer. But I will confirm it. Awesome. Anything else from council? Seeing none. All right, we're going to dive into the agenda, starting with item one, is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Judy Teneglia. How do I say it?
Teneglia.
Teneglia. I'm glad you did that, because I probably would have not got that right, but I appreciate you being here. This is to host a gathering with live music in the backyard of their home, located at 15367 Susanna Circle, on Sunday, August 24th, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So tell us a little about it.
Just about 50 people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And a band, and I have a very large backyard.
Have you done it before?
Yep.
Awesome. Oh, Councilman Toy, no, she's there.
No, I've never been. I've never been.
She remembers. About four years ago.
Was it four years ago?
Yeah, right after COVID.
It just, time flies, you know. Well, anyhow, you do a fantastic job, and I was just going to offer an approving, so you could still have this as well. From, what, 3:00 to 8:00? You're not going to go any later?
We have permission from the, behind us in that.
Great, okay.
Maybe Councilman Toy will actually show up this year.
Never know. And you have hula dancers as well?
No, no.
None, okay.
Listen, I know.
I've said every time.
Listen, I know a council member that might be for hire. I'm just saying.
Just so Scott's got a job.
All right. With that, are you, Councilman Toy, are you fine with that to be on consent?
I certainly am. That means you don't have to come back.
Unless you want to.
Oh, I don't? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Anything from council? Anything from the audience? All right, moving on.
You're allowed to leave, too, if you don't have to stay.
This is the best show on earth, man. Let's go. Item two is a request to barricade city streets. Comes to us from Jared Keyes, in reference to Van Court between Levann, Van Court on Levann, wait, on Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, in order to host a wedding reception on the grounds of, okay, help me with this one. What are we at? What church is this?
Christ something.
Christ Delphi Church.
There we go. Thank you. Listen.
That's it.
It is. All right, thank you, Vice President. Do we have the petitioner here, or a representative?
Uh-oh.
Mr. President, I'd like to table this to the next study meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, that is permissible. So we will, oh, oh, not here. Okay. So we're tabling that till the next meeting. Moving on, item three, a block party from Karen Shatter to be held Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM, on Sussex Street between Shearwood and Fitzgerald Streets, with a rain delay on Sunday, September 7, 2025. Good evening.
Hello. Karen Shatter from Sussex Street. This is our 28th block party, annual block party. Same thing as usual, food, games, crafts.
We got crafts this time?
Crafts, game, you name it. We have bounce houses.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent. I know the Shatters, they throw good parties.
Yes.
You're all welcome to stop by.
Is Councilman Donovan allowed this year, or is he still banned?
Laura Troy's been there.
Well, Laura also got banned, too. I think that was in 2020, but that's fine.
I tried to do the hula dance.
There won't be hula's at Earth.
Side note, Mr. President, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have a Guinness World Record holder in your family, too.
We do. I have a son who's a world record, what is it, yo-yoing, or maybe spin top. Look him up, Dennis Shatter.
All right, I'm actually writing this down, to attend this party. So you do have an approving on consent. Your matter is all but assured to be approved. Audience, any issues with this? All right.
Thanks so much.
So we'll see you, enjoy. We'll see you next year.
Okay, you're welcome to stop by.
Thank you. All right, item four is a block party. This comes to us from Heather Wilson, to be held Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, between 38532 and 38517, Tuscany Court. Good evening.
Hello.
So tell us a little, I mean, we got party time going on.
Yeah, it's the first one we've ever had on our street.
There we go.
So big deal. We've got about six families that are organizing, but it's a small street, about 20 homes. So we'll see how it goes.
All right, Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues. Thank you for hosting your first block party on Tuscany Court. I hope there's some good wine there. Little joke for the night. Tough crowd, tough crowd. But I will note that for newer neighborhood activities, the city does have a grant program that now Judge Jolly, former Councilman Jolly, helped put together, and it's a grant program that neighborhood associations can apply for. There's a whole process and whatnot, but something to think about next year. There's a timeframe and all that, but maybe that could help.
We actually did that.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, we already got it. So we're going to get a bounce house with it, and Kona Ice, and maybe pay for some food. So, yeah, we did that. Thank you.
Congrats, and I wish you many years of success. Thanks for doing it.
Yes, this is the first time. This is good. We need to, like, start giving, like, t-shirts out for, like, the first, the first go.
Maybe they can be yellow.
Well, we should have an initiation fee.
Yeah, that could be.
That's it.
You have an approving on consent, right? We do have a motion? Yes. Your matter is all but approved. Thank you for doing this, and we will see you back next year for year two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns from the audience on the first annual block party? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item five, is a block party. This is coming to us from Wendy Stone, to be held Saturday, September 13, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, within the cul-de-sac of Barlamore Court, with a rain date of Saturday, September 27, 2025. Is Wendy here? Or do we have a petitioner?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to table item number five to the next study as well.
All right, we got two tables.
Support.
Booyah. Okay. All right, moving on. Item six is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-06-02-12 submitted by Penske Automotive Group, requesting waiver use approval to operate an automobile repair facility in connection with Bill Brown Ford at 11813 Hubbard Street, located on the west side of Hubbard Road between Plymouth and Capitol. Mr. Art Romina.
Thank you. This property, 11813 Hubbard Street, is a property that was recently secured by Penske Automotive. They also own the property to the north. They operate the facility to the south, which is the former overseas motor. The building was recently demolished, and then, of course, the main dealership is across the street on Hubbard. The zoning here is M1. It's a little under two acres in size. Penske intends to take this former manufacturing facility that was previously occupied by Hyvall, convert it to an automotive repair facility, move a lot of their operation from across the street to this new building. This building's about 33,000 square feet. They're going to add another 6,700 square feet. Inside the building, there will be about 29 car lifts. There will also be a car service drive, so vehicles will enter along the north side of the, of the building for service operations. There'll be a lounge, conference, break rooms, parts department, storage, everything that you would typically see associated with a facility like this at a dealership. Altogether, the new building will be about 40,000 square feet. The site plan provides for 63 parking spaces. That should be more than enough to accommodate the use. There are two driveways that currently service the facility off of Hubbard Street. There is a one-way drive along the front of the building with the eight parking spaces, angled parking spaces provided there. They're also providing some cross-access to the Fleet Center, which is their operation immediately to the north. Planning Commission reviewed this item at their meeting a couple of weeks ago, and is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romina, counsel.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And then, to Mr. Romina, if I may, the older buildings in the back of where the showroom is, is that going to be gone then, or?
I'm going to let Mr. Anderson. I'm not exactly sure which buildings you're referring to, but I'll bring up the plan.
Yeah, I think he knows. Yep.
Can we have you to say, name and address for the record, and then stand by for questions?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Anderson with Penske Automotive Group, and we're located in Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
Thank you.
Can I continue my?
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Anderson, thank you very much for all you're doing down there. I'm down there every day. I own a business across the street from you. You've done a miraculous job so far. I wouldn't even question this. I'd like to offer an approving right from the get-go, but I do have a couple of questions. You have, your repairs are behind the showroom there currently, right?
Yes, we have some bays there.
Will that stay, sir? Do you know?
Yeah, so as you're looking at this aerial, sorry, where if you go back to the, the aerial, okay, the aerial, yeah. As you're looking at this aerial, in the lower right-hand corner is our sales operation, and we have sales there and service there as well. So we're going to continue to have service bays there. We're going to continue to have sales there.
Okay.
If you go up, the next building north, that building is kind of unoccupied now. We're going to convert that into a parts storage area. But then there's another building to the north of that, which is what's referred to, we refer to as a Great Lakes Building. We're currently leasing about half of that for bays, so we will, we will vacate that building when we go into the new building. But so what we're trying to do is create more space in our building, because as soon as we move these operations out, we're going to renovate this building to create more showroom space inside of it. So that's, it's kind of a puzzle, and we're moving pieces around right now. But ultimately, we want to create more room in the sales operation for showroom capacity.
Yes, so you're not going to eliminate that showroom building at all, right? You're just going to refurbish it, repurpose it.
And expand it within the existing footprint.
Because some of the neighborhood back there say, oh, they're going to tear down my buildings. And I don't believe they are, but I didn't want to speak for you. That's why I just wanted to clarify a few things.
There'll be no demolition of any buildings as part of this.
Well, I want to give my other colleagues a chance to speak, obviously, but I just got to thank you. I've been on that road for 40-some years, both near Inster, and then we moved up and have refurbished two buildings on that street. And I got to tell you, you have made such an improvement there. It is just awesome. I appreciate it so much, from a business owner that's been there for a long time, and many in the surrounding area are just so proud to have you, you know, there. And I know that dealership has been a number one, not only in the country, but the gentleman last time told me it was in the, in the world.
From a volume standpoint, that's correct.
Yeah, so that is awesome. So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer an approving. They're neighbors of ours, and I wish them all the luck in the world, and appreciate all the kind of time and effort and dollars that they're spending in that location. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Are you fine with that being on consent, unless we have any issues from our colleagues?
I have no problem unless others have, you know, you know, concerns or whatever.
We'll keep it on consent?
Yes.
Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Anderson, thanks for you and your team being here this evening. Echoing Councilman Toy's comments, you guys have done an amazing job right there on Plymouth Road, getting rid of some dilapidated buildings. And it's nice to see, I remember last year, this time, we were looking at what you're going to do with that building, and demo what that parking lot was going to look like, what those bollards were going to look like, and your teams out there doing restoration work and sidewalk improvements and whatnot. So it's going to be pretty exciting, and I'm looking forward to this continued evolution of updating that whole Bill Brown corner and everything that Bill Brown has contributed in really a short amount of time. And you've guys have bought up a lot of old buildings and demoed stuff, and you do a lot of enhancements over on another part of town. So just hats off to you and your team, and to Mr. Penske and Bill Brown team in general. In between the building and the parking lot, you added some nice new fencing. Looks really pretty. That, now that you guys are neighbors, you're not, you don't plan on changing anything right there? You're happy with that kind of, kind of synergy between the two parcels?
That's correct. So we will not have any more fence between. We do have bollards there, and we are replacing the fence on the, I guess that'd be the east end of the new Hubbard property. We took down the chain link fence, and we're extending that wood fence all the way down there, which is basically a fence replacement, but with a nicer-looking fence.
Yeah, it's a huge improvement to that old tethered chain link fence that had been hit by many cars over the last few decades, and definitely a nice, huge improvement. To the building itself, I notice there's some nice masonry white features are added to it. So the idea is to make it look like the rendering that was in the packet, more of a white building as opposed to a brown.
That's correct. That's Ford's new image, is to have white buildings as opposed to the silver metal panels that they had before. Everything is white now. So we're trying to accommodate their, their program for their corporate identity as best we can.
And the idea is that your customers will be, this will be the service center for Bill Brown right there, so customers will go back there.
That's correct. You know, it's going to free up a lot of traffic that we currently have at the sales facility. It's just a real congested space, because we have parts delivery going on there. We have sales going on. We have all these customers showing up in the morning with their cars. So we're going to be able to take that whole activity and move it on to Hubbard. And not only that, but we created a queuing area off the road in front of the building, so that we're not going to have cars lined up out on the street. And so we're trying to do as best we can to help the area. You know, I have to say, I was out there with Mr. Penske a couple of weeks ago, walking the parking lot, and you know, he said, well, this isn't looking good enough for me. The sidewalks are a little old, the grass is dying a little bit out front. So he said, just take all the sidewalks out, replace them. Let's take all the grass out. We're going to put all new sod down. We're going to put nice rings around the tree. Let's take all the grass out. We're going to put all new sod down. We're going to put nice rings around the trees with mulch. So, you know, he really wants that whole area along Hubbard, or along Plymouth there to, to really stand out and be a showpiece for him as well.
It's funny you say that, Mr. Anderson. I remember looking back at our notes. They didn't say anything about ripping all the sidewalk out. I'm like, huh, I wonder what they're doing there. And it's nice to hear Mr. Penske is top-notch because that we, that's what we want in Livonia. I love this project. I think it's a huge enhancement. And I'm happy you mentioned on the, the queuing traffic on Plymouth Road. I've seen that where cars will back up onto Plymouth Road, the, the curb lane right there trying to get into Bill Brown. And so it sounds like you're solving that issue. So thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of quick questions. I was really impressed when I saw this at the July 1 Planning Commission meeting. Just the look, the crisp white building, it really appeals to me. Couple of questions quick. Hours of operation on the service center?
So it is typically from seven in the morning until six at night.
Okay.
Only on weekdays, no weekends.
Sure. Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that was out there. I know it came up that there's a car wash back there. I just want to assure everyone that it is not a retail car wash. It's really.
No, it's just for our customer cars to clean them before we return them.
Yeah, yeah. So that did come up. There was some audience that was concerned about that, so I just wanted to. But yes, as Mr. Donavick and Ms. Toy both said, thank you for your community commitment and what you've done there. And honestly, I think the bollards look a lot better even than the fencing, to be honest. And I know they're functional, but they also look good, so.
Well, we're just getting started, so we have to redo the whole showroom. So hopefully that whole area is going to be completely refurbished and updated and refreshed.
It's going to be a great anchor there on Plymouth Road in that part of the city, so thank you.
Cool.
Mr. President, lastly, I just want to mention to the council and just to the planning staff. I think that now we've had this exercise of these bollards. I know there was some, some nervous feelings about what those will look like in reality. It's hard sometimes to look at renderings and transfer those to reality. And I'll just note for the planning staff and for council, those turned out amazing. And I think they're a great, hopefully we use those as a kind of a representation moving forward and kind of set the tone. I think those bollards in reality look really good and especially when you add the vegetation one, I think they'll be nice for future petitioners. Thanks, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right, so I was just going to finish with, again, more of the community. I know Councilman Donavick brought up the donations that you guys have presented to the city. And I've known, met, you know, I, I also serve on the board for the Livonia Hockey Association and every team is kind of like their own franchise and they go and try to get raise funds. I, I think that your logo is on everything. So listen, and that just goes from hockey. It shows the partnership to the community. And I know Bill Brown before Penske even brought that, but I, I appreciate you guys continuing that tradition to be involved so deeply into the community. The only wish that I have is, is that when you guys do vacate the terrace, maybe turn it into the movie theater and you can offer, you know, maybe a free movie tickets based. No, I'm laughing. I, I remember the terrace. It was awesome.
I think he just said no comment.
I know, I hear you. No, the terrace is a great movie theater. It was awesome. So, yes. But please continue, you know, whatever we can do to support you guys, it's a great partnership and you guys are doing great things on Plymouth Road and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, yeah, you have an approving on consent. You can hang out with us if you want, but you don't have to.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. All right, moving on. Item seven is an award of contract. This comes to us from the Livonia Public Library in reference to website redesign implementation, training, hosting, and optional services from budgeted funds. Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
I'm Lindsay Fricki. I'm the Branch Library of Operations, so thanks for having us. So this redesign is essential so that we can meet federal web content accessibility guidelines by the April of 2026 deadline. It is required for all government websites by that deadline. Synergy specializes in building accessible websites, ensuring full compliance, so this would be ahead of the schedule if awarded. The library site is separate from the cities due to the unique services, resources, and community engagement features that is necessary. However, the city's information systems department was actively involved in reviewing the RFP and the vendor selection process to ensure technical alignment. Synergy was chosen through a competitive evaluation process. They have been a federal government vendor since 2005, so they have a strong record of secure, user-friendly, and accessible sites already with their track record. They offered the lowest annual hosting and ongoing maintenance cost among all the proposals received. And what this would allow is it is a custom WordPress website design, so the library currently uses WordPress, so there would not be an additional training component for our staff. But it is low-cost, user-friendly. They also offer a low-cost, user-friendly event calendar, which is important for us to tailor our library programs and services. They will also host important updates, data backups, and security patches, which would minimize city and library staff burdens. And we also will be allowed for optimal services to be added in the future if we wanted to expand other offerings without requiring a new vendor. And if it was approved, our timeline, obviously if it gets put on the August 11th consent agenda, the project could begin in September of '25, which would keep us way ahead of schedule of meeting these federal compliance deadlines. Thank you.
Awesome. No, thank you for that detailed information. The packet item was great. I'm going to go to my colleagues. Councilwoman Bezinski.
Yes, so in our packet, you know, I saw one of the clients that they had was Genesee County Parks, which I'm familiar with what their site upgraded to. I thought it is a improved site from what Genesee County had had previously. So I am hopeful that they can do an equally good job in improving our website and modernizing it and making it more accessible. So I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's no objection from my colleagues.
Sounds good. We have an approving on consent. I'm going to go to Councilman Donavick.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you for being here this evening. When I was reviewing the packet, it talked about maintenance support costs, $2,700 annual fee if required. What does that mean, the if required?
If we, depending on, so the maintenance will be always a $2,700 annual fee. Let me see where you're referring to. I'm looking through our.
It's in the actual contract, the form of proposal, Livonia Public Library Website Redesign Schedule Pricing. Talks about $19,285 production hours and costs, and then talks about if required, $2,700 annual fee.
Yeah, so that's what I was referring to, that we would ask them to have a local hosting and ongoing maintenance fee, which would be that $2,700 annually, so that would take away the burden from our staff to be able to run those updated. You know, if there's patches or security things that we can have continuously updating without putting the burden on staff.
So when you say putting the burden on staff, IT department would not be, Casey's department would not be handling the general maintenance and upkeep of this website?
The library's website is separate, so it would be our IT in the libraries for our staff, which is currently one head of technology. Staff member at this time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council? I'm going to go to the audience. Mr. Martin.
Christopher Martin, the greatest state of Michigan. I just heard a great deal of gibberish, is what I would call that. How, what is this improving? Is this improving the computers that the average citizen uses? What, what is this really about?
No, it's, it's a, it's a website redesign implementation. It brings us up and it's actually required.
I understood the required part.
Yeah, it's, it's basically redesigning all the websites, just as it is in the packet.
Yeah, that, that citizens would use on the, on the computers. You said no earlier to that.
No, no, it's, it's, it would be the library's website. So, I mean, in theory, it's the homepage that you would jump into.
Oh, so that, okay. So if you had a computer, okay, if you had a computer at home and you went on the website.
Yep.
This is what it's about?
Absolutely.
It has nothing to do with the computers in the library updating those whatsoever?
No, nope.
Okay.
No, no, it's good questions. It's good questions.
To me, it was just, like I said, it was just a bunch of gibberish, okay? And, you know, when you see something like optional services, what, what does that mean, optional services?
I gotta tell you, I, the packet was very, it was well presented on.
Well, okay, I don't have the packet, so that's why I asked the questions that I did.
You're all good. Mr. Martin, I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't think it was gibberish at all. I thought you did a nice presentation. Thank you for, thank you for providing that information to the council. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Jerry Karsinski, Bainbridge Street in Livonia. I just have a question about this hosting. So is it physically on a computer in the library?
Mr. Bezinski, just to direct your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. And then.
So that, the question is just about hosting. Is it physically a computer in the library or are we using cloud services?
If you can answer, I believe it's cloud services.
I believe it is cloud services.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so you have an approving on consent. I thought the packet was awesome and it is awesome. So I appreciate you hanging out with us. You can come back if you want to, but your matter is all but assured to be approved.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. All right, actually, so again, item eight has been removed, but we're going to finish it with the new number eight, which is an award of contract from the Department of Public Works, from the Public Services Division in reference to the 2026 through 2031 supplemental routine street sweeping program at the 2016 contract unit prices from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore, great to see you.
Evening, council. Good to see you too. Doug Moore with Department of Public Works. Counsel, our contractor, GNM Sweeping, approached us back in March about extending their current pricing of $60 a lane mile for normal sweeping, the three of them, and $70 a lane mile for our leaf pickup program. This pricing was bid back in 2016. They've held it since. We did not bid it out because reviewing Mitten, we found that other pricing is running 50 to 100% higher than this pricing. He's willing to hold it through 2031 and I may or may not be around when this contract ends, so.
Listen, I, I was, I was looking at the dates. I'm like, man, that's.
Can we just offer an approving right now, please?
I got it. Vice President.
It's a little nervous.
What I want to know, did they gouge us back in 2016 or is Mr. Moore just a really shrewd negotiator?
Actually, back then, he was the low bidder then too and the, and the company that bid second. We can't, they're around, but I don't think they sweep streets anymore.
Okay, interesting. But, no, and I.
Service of the past.
And I, I don't think always the residents realize that this is such an important thing to have happen, especially after leaf pickup in the fall. And the fact that this is one of those city services that a lot of cities don't offer. It's just another, you know, feather in the Livonia's cap that we do this. So I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent, but please, Mr. Moore, go ahead.
This does meet part of our MS4 stormwater permit that we have with the state. Street, street sweeping is an integral part of that permit that we have, that we do. And we actually do more than the Alliance of Rouge Communities, which we're part of, we committed to with the, with the ARC.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, we do have a, yeah, we have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience on this? You coming up for comment? All right, just make sure. I didn't know if you were running that way because that's what I'm about to do.
Hi, good evening. Eileen McDonald. I know we're not bidding this out. However, do you know what the annual amounts that are being paid to this funder are?
Yes, it's in packets.
Yeah.
Yes, I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, but.
The annual contract is $180,000.
I know that's the contract amount, but how much do they actually write a check for?
Oh, what, I, we could potentially.
Just if you can find that out too, Brandon, you got a list.
Absolutely. I got, it's right here. Hang on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience? All right, seeing none. I'm going to go back to council and then I'll go to the audience.
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, well, let me go to the audience first.
Yeah, go to the audience.
Is there any items on the agenda that have not been talked about? If you'd like to make your way to a podium, seeing none, I'm going to go to council now. Councilwoman Toy.
Mr. Chair, one of our city attorneys, Mr. Goldstein, had some very serious surgery today. And as I was going through my emails, I, I really think we should have a few moments of silence. Eric's been through quite a bit and he's just an outstanding public servant here in our, in our city hall family. And I just hope that, I, I haven't heard anything, but I, you know, I think we all just, Mr. Carter, or Attorney Carter?
Absolutely. I, I am allowed to share that Eric is awake. The procedure went well. He's doing well and, and he'll be recuperating for the next little bit.
Oh, great.
Then we're going to cheers him.
So I guess if we can just send him prayers or if you want to do a few moments of silence, whatever your pleasure is, council.
Yeah, we'll send him prayers. And you know what? I know a good flower shop. Maybe we can get some flowers over to him.
I know one too, sir.
The number one in metro Detroit.
Have these guys design it down there. They're good designers.
Deal.
Yes.
But no, Mr. Goldstein is a family in Livonia, a great, great person, you know, lights up the room and we are so happy that the, the procedure went well. So we're with him. Let him know, please. Let him know at council. Even though he probably gets scared of us at times, but that's fine. Tell him we're with him. With that, anything else from council?
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. I think we can safely show seven. Good night, Livonia.